All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. Consent agenda. Approval of minutes for regular meetings, five eight, 2025. Budget workshop, four twenty-nine, 2025. Executive session meetings, meeting, five eight, 2025. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Goldstein?
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. Student government report, student government activities?
Is anybody here?
Oh, you're fine. Student government report.
Student government. That might not count.
Thank you.
Good evening, school committee members. The group of seniors here are here tonight to recap what CHS student government has been up to during the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. My name is Sam Henderson, and I'll start us off back in September. We began the school year on the freshman's first day, helping the new nervous and overwhelmed students find their way around our ginormous buildings. A few weeks later, we held freshman elections to get the class of 2028 up and running.
Hi, my name's Tegan Kenneths. I'm going to be talking about the month of October. In October, we had our annual Spirit Week, which was very successful. We had days including Jersey Day, Country versus Country Club, Adam Sandler Day, Class Color Day, and at the end of the week, Clipper Color Day. We also hosted a series of successful competitive events that encourage friendly competition between the grades, such as Game Night, Powder Puff and Class Clash, ending off Spirit Week with our successful and highly attended both homecoming football games and homecoming dance. Additionally, in October, student government was also able to plan a Pink Day for Breast Cancer Awareness.
Hi, my name is Sasha Sen, and I'll be covering the month of November. We had great success with our annual Turkey Drive, which supports our local Happy Get Baskets program, supplying baskets for families in need during the holidays. Throughout the month, students participated in a school-wide competition to collect cans for donation, and our Phila Truck event at Ciabra boosted our efforts.
Hi, my name is Amanda Massey, and I'm going to be covering December and January. In December, we had our Adopt a Family fundraiser, where we collected donations to put together gifts for families in need during the holiday season. We held a scavenger hunt for student government to participate in, including stops such as taking a picture with a mall Santa and singing a Christmas carol with the mayor. And then we came together and had a wrapping party where we bonded, and we wrapped more than 100 gifts for families in need. In January, we held our Winter Ball Dance at Wright's Farm. We had so much fun celebrating our hard work during Semester One and bringing our school community together. I personally love the DJ and the food.
Next, in February, Cumberland High School hosted its first blood drive of the year. With two of our junior class officers spearheading the event, we had not only had numerous students donate, but also several members of our faculty and staff. The amount of blood donated could save over 100 lives. Their donations have the, oh, sorry. The success of our first blood drive led CHS to operate a second blood drive later in the year, which Annie will touch upon later. Next up in March, with the yearbook crew wanting more pictures, we held March Mayhem. In other words, Spirit Week 2.0. Dressed-up days included Celebrity Day, Character Day, Dynamic Duo Day, and many more.
Hi, I'm Annie Ingle, and I'll be talking about April and May. This year, instead of contributing to pennies for patients, our community chose to support one of our own, Tyler Preia, a ninth grader who has been courageously battling leukemia. We created Turn It Up For Tyler, a month-long fundraising effort that brought together students, teachers, and families in honor of Tyler's strengths. Events included raffling off teacher parking spots, holding 20% nights at local restaurants like Angelo's Palace Pizza and Everybody's Favorite Breakfast, duct taping our principal to the wall, and organizing classroom competitions for pizza and breakfast parties. We raised over $7,000 for Tyler and his family. Shortly after, we received a thank you message from Tyler's family, letting us know that Tyler was very grateful and his condition was improving by the day. As for May, we, since our first run-through of the blood drive went so successfully, they asked us to do it again, and this time, we were able to increase our donors, and we got 47 people to donate, which means 137 potential lives were saved. We also had an extremely successful junior prom, and although we don't have any results in yet, we are now in the midst of class elections for next year.
Hello, my name is Rose Demisto, and I will be giving you a preview of the month of June. Starting on June 6th, we have our senior events that consist of Senior Sunset, the Senior Parade, a movie night tailgate, an elementary school walkthrough, and a pre-graduation ice cream celebration. June 6th is the last day of school for the seniors, and it's the Senior Prom, which will take place at Quineset Country Club. The theme is Tangled. And lastly, on Wednesday, the 11th, we have our graduation at 6:00 PM. I'm sure we are all so excited to graduate, yet so sad to leave Cumberland High School. That's a wrap.
Well, thank you, and it sounds like a very impressive year. Thank you for all your hard work, and congratulations on graduation. Next, we have the reporter of executive session meeting, reporter of executive session meeting on five twenty-two, 2025. Reporter of executive session votes, there were no votes taken. Vote to seal minutes of executive session, can I have a motion to vote to seal minutes of executive session?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Feather?
Second.
Second by Ms. Goldstein, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. Superintendent's report, Dr. Thornton?
Evening, Madam Chair. First up, Marty Crowley has some exciting news. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Crowley.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. Good evening, everybody. You hear me speak glowingly about our Unified Sports programs on multiple occasions, and how it's just, it's amazing to see these student athletes and competing. Special Olympics is dedicated to promoting social inclusion through shared sports. Unified Sports joins people with and without intellectual disabilities and allows them to compete on the same team. Our Unified Basketball program is here tonight as a state champion. Before we bring them out, I want to thank our selfless dedication of our coaches, Mr. Dean, Mrs. Lemieux, Mrs. Turner, and Ms. Scary, and all the volunteers who come back as well. Hope Fitzgerald, an alumni comes back quite often, J.G. Snodgrass comes back often to help out, and the fact that they come back and give themselves willingly, go to a practice on a Monday at the Wellness Center, it's fantastic. So, without any further ado, I introduce your state champions!
Hi, thanks so much for having us. We appreciate this a lot. I'm fortunate enough to be a teacher here, so I get to see the amazing kids that we have in our school all the time. I'm just really grateful that you get to see a few more of our amazing kids. This team has been awesome. It's so much fun. The coaches, we really say that it's a pleasure for us. It makes our day a thousand times better. And our day is obviously great because we're all Clippers, but it's even better when we get to hang out with these kids. Another awesome honor that we had this year at the state championship, they asked for a couple of volunteers, so we had some of our athletes that volunteered. And Luke Holmander was actually the co-MC along with Amadou Diallo, so Luke has actually prepared a few words to represent, oops, sorry bud, to represent our team. So Luke is going to say a few words, and he's pretty tall, so.
Six foot four.
Six-four. Solid six-four, great rebounder. Job, bud. All right, go ahead, pal.
Okay. My name is Luke Holmander, and I am representing the Unified Basketball Team. The Unified Basketball Team would like to thank the entire Cumberland community for their support this season. The players would like to thank their coaches, Mr. Dean, Ms. Turner, Ms. Lemieux, and Ms. Scary. They have shown us lots of gratitude and support throughout the season. As part of our Unified Basketball Team, we have had the time of our lives because we love playing basketball and have learned from each other throughout the season. We have learned sportsmanship skills, and above all, having fun. Our parents were a huge support for us this season, and they have been cheering us on in our games. We are extremely proud of what we accomplished this season and couldn't have done it without all of you. We are extremely honored to be recognized by the Cumberland School Committee. We will treasure these moments forever. As Freddie Mercury once said, "We are the champions, my friends." Thank you, everyone.
All right, so, next up, last week, I actually had the privilege of being a judge in a culinary food challenge, and tonight, to talk about that is our lead at Chartwell's Frank Esposito.
Thank you, Phil. So, we did a cook-off, a discovery cook-off. We invited all the elementary schools to find a participant to participate. We got five who actually signed up for it. Four showed up to actually be a chef that night. The four actually cooked their own food. We had a set of stations up in the high school, and each station, a student would actually have their work area, and they would cook and prepare their meal. After that, they would actually serve their meal to the judges. And I've got to give them a lot of credit, because elementary kids, I could have never done that as an elementary student, that's for sure. They're preparing it, they go to the judges, and now they're going to see the judges' reaction after they serve the food. So, it was really a good event. I wish more schools would participate, so hopefully next year, Garvin won again. I heard they won last year, I wasn't here for that, but, so we need some more chef talent in the area to step up to the plate. It was a great event, and that was really it, Phil. And the cook-off challenge, the winner went to a Garvin elementary student. Her name is Maryam Thoreau, and she has to be here somewhere.
Thank you, thank you. All right, and next up, just moving right along, we did have a nice event, a shout-out to Community and BF Norton Chorus has got together, went to the P. Bruins with Ms. St. George, and they sang God Bless America. That was a nice night for those chorus students. Next up, I'm calling up Amanda Zifcak. She has some goings-on at Ashton Elementary.
Hi, everyone. I'm Amanda Zifcak. I am the specialized program teacher at Ashton for the PALS program, and Mrs. Carbonick couldn't be here tonight, so I'm actually here to share news on two things that have been going on. So, recently, I know a couple of you have visited Ashton and got to see an Earth Day project. Students were challenged to create something unique and wonderful from pre-existing items, recyclable materials in honor of Earth Day. Ms. Vogel, and I know Ms. Goldstein and Ms. Shay were there, and they voted for the best projects. Students were very creative and thoughtful with their projects. Voting was challenging, but Victoria Lynn from Grade Five and Olivia Diaz from Grade One were selected as the winners, so congratulations to them. And then, secondly, just talking quickly about the Ashton Cafe. So, as part of the PALS program, which is housed at Ashton, it's designed for students in K-5 who have autism and other mild moderate developmental delays, and typically, students present with needs in a variety of areas. And one of the things we started doing this year, I had spoken to Mrs. Carbonick about starting a cafe. We try and work on some life skills throughout our day, social skills, and this was a really great way to get students involved in the school community. It was our first year at Ashton, and it was so well-received. Each week, the students use a visually-supported order form that all the teachers receive. They place their order for different chips or sodas, coffee, tea, and then we go around and fill those orders and deliver it to the teachers around the building. And I think you guys got to enjoy a couple of little treats from us that day. The students really love it, and the Ashton community has been amazing supporting it. So, thank you.
All right, and next up, I'm pleased to call up Principal Storm with some news from McCourt.
Good evening, school committee. Good evening, everybody. We do have a few exciting announcements this evening from McCourt. The first is McCourt Middle School is proud to announce that we were selected as a recipient of the Feinstein Golden Ticket Award. As you know, other schools in the district have been awarded, and it was McCourt's turn. So, we have Charlotte Stock, she is an eighth-grade student. Because her ticket did get chosen, McCourt Middle School gets a $5,000 grant from the Feinstein organization, as well as a 500 donation towards the charity of Charlotte's Choice. She has chosen the Hotel for Homeless Dogs. So, that grant will be going to them, and I would like to thank Charlotte and the Feinstein Foundation for their continued commitment to our schools in Cumberland. She could not be here with us this evening, but she does receive a little goodie bag that she'll receive tomorrow in school. I would like to call up Carolyn Dooley, the McCourt art teacher. If she can come up and join me for the next part. We're also going to take a moment to recognize some outstanding efforts of our students who participated in the Lindsay Ann Burke Memorial Art Contest, which promotes awareness and education around healthy relationships. Under the guidance of art teacher Ms. Dooley, as well as our Health and Physical Education teacher, Ms. DiOrio, students created and submitted artwork that reflected these powerful themes. Their dedication and creativity were honored at various levels of the competition, and I am going to briefly, I think we do have some of our winners here this evening, so I will go through the names. If you are here, you may please come up and join us up here. Our award winners, we did have, in Grade Eight, we have Jaleah Semino, Connie Saunders, Maya Perry, and Elizabeth Hole. We have Connie here this evening. Grade Seven, we have Lillian Bradley, Arden McLaughlin, Sarah Jerome, Aurora Harrington, Ava Rodriguez, Alicia Azavito, and Aria DeJesus. In Grade Six, we have Connor Crodo, Fiona G., Zoe Reese, Miles Bickerstaff, Emily Archer, Mateus Gonzalez, Alexa Horton, and there's one more, Ms. Dooley. Olivia, oh, thank you. Olivia Correa. Thank you. So, those are our award winners. And one more exciting announcement. Over the past year, one of the goals set by our Student Leadership Committee in conjunction with myself and Ms. Holman was to explore the idea of rebranding McCourt Middle School with a new mascot, something that represents the identity, energy, and pride of our school. After multiple rounds of brainstorming discussion, students narrowed down the options to two final choices. They were the Mariners or the Maccos. We then invited all McCourt students, as well as our incoming fifth graders from BF and Garvin, to cast their vote. We are excited to announce to the school committee and the broader community of Cumberland that the winner by a landslide was the McCourt Maccos. So, over. So, we worked with an awesome graphic designer, developed a brand-new logo, so starting next year, we'll be officially known as the McCourt Maccos. So, stay tuned for all the awesome merch that comes along with it, as well as some exciting additions around McCourt to make it a little bit more exciting for our students. And it's just an awesome opportunity to have students be engrossed and own their school community, and that was one of my goals as well. So, we're off to a great start, McCourt Maccos. Thank you.
All right, and just to wind things up, we had our first playground ribbon-cutting, May 16th at Cumberland Hill. Just a great, great playground. Here you can see the principal, Ms. Malcolm, on the slide for the first time over there on the far side, but just a great, great opening. We're going to be now starting the process at Garvin any day now, and then lastly, Ashton. Moving on to our topic of construction at Community, just you see the bathrooms now are near completion. There's one example. Here we have the ceiling going in, the wood ceiling with the lighting. Here we have just, the ceilings are being filled in in most of the classrooms, and here, the cabinetry is going in in most classrooms. Here, I showed you this picture, this was the cafeteria, or the kitchen, of the community school back in the day. Now it's an open space. That's why I show you how that changed. Next, Mike? Here, we did save some, as you know, this is a Reno, not a brand-new building. This flooring is original, and we thought we could keep it and get it back, so it's an example of existing flooring, in good shape with some wax, so we got that back. Once again, some bathroom work being done. I love these bathrooms. These are the K-bathrooms with the small toilets, so those are all going in. This is a cool shot. This part of the building is circa 1927 over at Community. Same basic footprint as Garvin, 1927, kind of like a sister school. And in the old days, they had like a wainscoting back here, and this was closed-in, but we kind of opened it up so you can see behind there, when you have a cubby in there, you can see what's going on, but we kept the area like that. Over here, same thing as Garvin. This was the old entrance to Garvin, 1927. This was the window, the stairs went down, you went outside. Now it's an office space. It's kind of how we kind of keep these things, you know, kind of old and new. This is kind of interesting. If you go to the back of Community now, there's like a, almost like a bunker being built that houses all of the HVAC items. It has to be built on a slab and have some walls around it, so that's already underway. And the basketball court, this happened this week. First, they put down the kind of the underlayment, then they put down the flooring, that's going in right now as we speak. The walls are painted, ceiling is new, and now we're looking at the mats going in, going around. That's really coming along, so everything is coming along. If you want to go for a tour, let me know. Happy to take you around Community, but it really is moving along nicely. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions to Dr. Thornton?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is reports of standing committees. Fiscal Management Subcommittee update, Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Fiscal Subcommittee did meet earlier this evening. We did have quite a few topics on the agenda. We had our Food Services come in, and they gave us a report, and the April data is in, and right now, we have, I guess, I don't want to get this wrong, we had a guarantee that we would have $123,000 from Chartwell, and right now, we're at $174,050, and the goal is hopefully to hit $200,000 in that guarantee for the year. So, that's money that will go directly back into the food services for all of our schools, so, you know, any equipment or other things that may be needed or enhancements. So, it's quite nice to have us exceed that guarantee already. And then also, the lunches and the breakfast, we've been reporting all year on the increase on the year-on-year numbers. So, for breakfast, we are up 1,600 more breakfasts served so far this year to date versus last year. And for the lunches, we're up 7,874 lunches. So, we continue to see the increase, and I think the feedback continues to be positive around Chartwell. We also will go over and have some resolutions that we're going to talk about a little bit later, and a payment of the bills. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Policy and Procedures Subcommittee update, Ms. Feather?
Just going to ask, are any of those resolutions for a panini maker? But, no. Policy and procedures, I'm obsessed with the Chartwell's panini. Policy and procedures did not meet this week. Our next meeting is tentatively scheduled for the 24th of June, pretty much because the chair of the Policy Committee is going to student events for the next foreseeable future until graduation. So, after graduation, we will have our next meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Feather. Achievement and Communications Subcommittee update, Ms. Shay?
We did not meet, but hoping to get one in before the end of the school year.
Thank you, Ms. Shay. And District Health and Wellness Subcommittee update, Ms. Shay?
The same as Achievement and Communications. We haven't met yet, but hopefully, we can get one on the books before the end of the school year.
Thank you very much. And comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Okay, no comments from the public? Old business, appointment of Building Committee member. Tonight, I will be appointing Ms. Shay as the Building Committee member for the construction of BF Norton. So, congratulations. New business, appointment of Achievement and Communications Subcommittee Chairperson. Since Ms. Shay is taking over the Building Committee member, I will now be the new Chair of Achievement and Communications Subcommittee, so. Discussion in our vote to approve homeschool instruction requests for 2024, 2025 school year.
Motion to approve the homeschool instruction request?
Motion by Ms. Feather?
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. Discussion in our vote on unsealing of executive-
Discussion in our vote on unsealing of executive minutes. I think this was asked for by Mr. Dean.
Yes, thank you. So we all went to a training in the spring, and part of the training was the OMA, the Open Meetings Act, and the ARPA requests and the laws concerning ARPA. And that was given by Mr. Adam Roach, who was the Assistant Attorney, Special Assistant Attorney General. And there were some things that came out of that. I think, I'm not sure what the date was, but I know I sent an email saying, requesting this on March 18th, so it's probably around March 18th. And one of the things, a couple of things he said, one was that the Attorney General's Office's philosophy is that, and we hope, and he said, "We hope everybody's philosophy is that most of the public bodies want to be as transparent as possible." He also said, "You always want to be as transparent as possible. You never want to look to deny records to the public. You want to produce as much to the public in the spirit of transparency. You have to make sure that every reasonably segregated portion of a record shall be made available. If you have a document that contains non-public information, such as home address, social security number, et cetera, nevertheless, there is still information in that document that is public. So you have to redact out those parts of the document and provide them to the public." He mentioned a few things that, you know, that was specifically for executive minutes that are sealed. He said there are certain circumstances where you seal executive minutes when they meet the exemptions to public records requests, the ARPA requests. When they do not continue to meet those exemptions that are listed in the state law, for instance, litigation or property purchases, when sealing the minutes will prevent bidders from getting the numbers, that will give them an advantage. When that property is purchased, then there is no longer a need to seal those minutes. Litigation or investigation as well. He specifically said that the investigatory part of an investigation is an exemption, but once the investigation is completed, that now becomes a public record. So if they are not properly sealed, the records, they should be unsealed and turned over. But what they promote is to unseal, at the Rhode Island Attorney General's Office, is to unseal them as soon as you can, and then thereby subject them to ARPA. We would advise against sealing executive session minutes in perpetuity. As soon as the reason for them being sealed, no longer applies. And he said that the only way to unseal these records is the school committee has the responsibility to unseal them through a vote, to unseal the records. Obviously, you would have to go through the records one by one and make sure that there was no pending litigation that had not been resolved yet, or, you know, any of the 27, I believe, there are exemptions to the Access to Public Records Act do not apply. And just like any other access to public record, you would have to go through and redact personal information, social security numbers, home addresses, anything like that, you know, the names of minors. But, you know, in my experience, the investigations, when they're concluded, are already redacted. I know I was privy to read an investigation that was conducted, that I was involved in, before I was on the school committee, and it was 275 pages, and the entire 275 pages had already been redacted. So, anyway, that's my two cents. Thank you. I mean, and it might not be the easy thing to do, but, you know, the right thing to do is not always the easy thing to do.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Ms. Feather.
So, one of the things that I just want to make clear to the public is that we do report out any votes taken in executive session, regardless of whether or not those executive session minutes are eventually sealed. So I do want to allow the public to know that, you know, anything that is decided during executive session has to be reported out, and we do do that. We do also provide all of the information that's being discussed in our public meetings to the public, and it's available on our drive, our public drive, so that ahead of school committee meetings, you are able to go and take a look at all of the items that will be discussed during our regular meetings. So I just wanted to make sure you know what steps we have been taking to ensure transparency.
Thank you, Ms. Feather. Anyone else? Mr. Adams?
Respectfully, with respect to what Mr. Dean said, I just want to make sure the committee doesn't conflate two things. One is the Access to Public Records Act, which is a person wants documents from a public body, and they submit a request for those documents. If those documents are public records, they get them. If they are not public records, and executive session minutes that are sealed are not public records under the APRA, that's period, like they're just not, then they don't get them. And that's just one example. For example, if I were to draft an opinion for a school committee and send it to you folks, that is also not a public record. It's an attorney-client communication which is specifically exempted. There are a bunch of exemptions that Mr. Dean mentioned. But just so it's clear, for example, litigation is a reason that the school committee can convene in executive session. And the example I sometimes give is if the lawyer comes in, talking to the school committee and says, "Maybe we can resolve this case. Maybe we can do it this way or that way. And will you give me authority to do it this way or that way?" And the school committee says, "Yes, we will," and they take a vote, for example. Well, the last thing you want to do as a lawyer is go into negotiating with the other side and have them know exactly what your authority is, because that's not good for anybody, particularly when you guys are stewards of the public trust and public dollars, by way of example. I am aware of the AG's kind of sensitivity here, that they would like to have people be disclosing these, but it's different for a sewer commission than it is for a school committee. And so, on the one hand, you've got the APRA, and executive session minutes are exempted. They can be unsealed absolutely by a vote of the committee, and how the machinations of that would happen, you know, we could have a long conversation about that. But generically, there are so many things that you guys deal with that aren't just litigation. It's school security, keeping the kids safe. Those things are discussed in executive session. You don't want that to get out. Student data, specific to students, all of that stuff would need to be reviewed. Personnel matters, all that sort of stuff. So there's a lot of stuff that is contained in there. But I wanted to make sure that it's clear that the APRA doesn't really apply to these minutes unless they are unsealed, in which case they're public. They would be on a website somewhere, just as the minutes might be otherwise that are not part of executive session. So there wouldn't even need to be an ARPA request. It's kind of an apple to an orange on ARPA, if that makes any sense. I just want to make sure that that was addressed in some way. So that's all I had.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Mr. Dean?
Yeah, I was just saying that even in current public records, you have to do an ARPA request unless they're, like, as Mrs. Feather said, they're out there so that you can read them. You have to, you know, if they're not out there, you can access them on their website. You have to do an ARPA request, even if they're public. And even then, they, the ones that are already public, they already redact them. And yes, security is one of the exemptions that, no matter, no matter how long, you know, unless it was security for a school maybe that we demolished, and it was specific to that building, that would never come off of the exemption list. Litigation would come off when the litigation was terminated. There's no reason for, to hold back the strategy of a case that was decided a decade previously. So obviously, there, of the, I believe there are 27 or 28 exemptions, you know, there are going to be a handful of those exemptions that will never come off of the executive minutes. They'll never be unsealed because they're, because they'll always meet that exemption. But what I was referring to were the ones that have already or will come off of that exemption list.
Anyone else? Okay, so we have discussion in our vote on unsealing of executive minutes, pleasure of the committee?
I'd like to make a motion that we unseal all the executive minutes that are no longer bound by the exemptions.
Motion by Mr. Dean of unsealing of executive minutes. Second by Mr. Bacon. All in favor? Any opposed? Nay. I just want to take account from everyone, just to make sure it's correct. Ms. Shea? Mr. Dean? Ms. Feather?
Nay.
Ms. Smith?
Nay.
Ms. Goldstein? Mr. Bacon? Myself, nay. That fails two to five with Ms. Shea, Ms. Feather, Ms. Smith, Ms. Goldstein, and Ms. Vogel in the negative. Next, discussion in our vote regarding culture and climate survey. Mr. Adams?
So just one thing I wanted to make clear to the public and to the members of the committee, just before we came in, I noted that there is an item in the drive, in the public drive, that's a proposal for the Cumberland School Committee by an outfit called the Redux Research. As I understand the context of this document, it is not an actual proposal, because it can't be. It was, I think, offered, I know that at least one school committee member wanted to at least discuss this issue, and that's why it's on the agenda. But this was, I guess, provided as a, "Hey, this is the type of stuff that is out here. This would be a vendor that does this sort of thing." And the reason I'm, you know, a little animated, you know, a little stressed out, is because when you read the agenda item, it almost looks like you could be voting on this. You are not, manifestly not, can't, because any sort of bid to do work for the school committee in excess of $5,000 is subject to the public bidding process under 4555-9, 4555-5, 4555-8. So as I am understanding this, this is just by way of an example of an outfit that does this work, just so that it's clear to the committee and to the public. As I understand this item, as it is on the agenda, it is a discussion of the concept of what this would be, and whether this is something generically that the committee wants to pursue, not this particular vendor. So just saying that out loud.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. And I think it was Mr. Dean and Mr. Bacon who would like this on the agenda, so would... Mr. Bacon?
Yeah, so exactly what Mr. Adams had said. If it's to the pleasure of the committee, I can contact this company and have them, you know, create a better document, as he had said, it is just so we had, so the committee had something in hand to look at, just, again, it was a company, this is what they do. The concept here is to, for us as a committee, assemble some polling questions, send them out to employees here of the district, and just get their feedback. This is a total 100% confidential, just to get a truthful, you know, background and some knowledge, so see what we can do, what to do better, if we need to do better, and that's the concept behind this survey. Many, many companies, as mine that I work for, that's what they do. They do an annual climate survey, just to kind of get, gauge how they're doing, how they're performing, any areas that they could perform better, areas where they need assistance, where they don't need assistance. That was the concept here, and that's what I wanted to present to you guys. This isn't, exactly, this is not 100%. This is just, I wanted something for you guys to look at and just see what the idea is here.
Thank you, Mr. Bacon. Mr. Dean?
Yes, I had proposed this a while back, but for different reasons. I know Mr. Bacon wanted to add some questions that were very relevant about trades, you know, and it was brought up at a meeting that there might be some pushback for bringing trades back, or the new block, you know, the new schedule we might be going to. So a lot of the questions, he had said, "Why don't we let every school committee member have a few questions, and, you know, if they have something they want, that they want to assess through the employees?" My original issue, and I had gone back and forth with you via email, and I sent you, I think, a couple of examples of how we do it in the, you know, in the military. We do what's called a command climate survey, you know, to make sure that discrimination is being trained, that discrimination is not being tolerated, that sexual assault is being trained on, that sexual assault, all things like that. And, you know, we, you know, the command will change the way that they do things based on the responses of the survey. One of the things that I am shocked by is the amount of claims of retaliation and whistleblowing. You know, I've been in units that are five times more the number of employees we have in this town that have had a quarter of those instances. I got one today. I'm going to forward to the rest of the committee, a claim of retaliation from a woman who spoke at the council meeting, and her son, who has never, ever been in trouble, all of a sudden is in trouble. And she has valid concerns. So I just think that it needs to be addressed. So that's why I proposed it a while back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dean.
Madam Chair?
Yes, of course. Dr. Thornton?
I know in your drive, you have some examples of something called SurveyWorks, and that's a survey put up by the state. I'm going to call Mr. Demana to give you a quick, five-minute snapshot of what that is. I think that may answer some of the questions you may have. Mr. Demana?
Sure, thank you, Dr. Thornton. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the committee. So every year, RIDE puts out a survey called SurveyWorks, the educators. It dates back many, many years, even back to when I was a principal at BF Norton, so it was definitely over a decade worth. SurveyWorks, their purpose is to, and their moniker is, "How to Improve RIDE's Educational System." And so every year, the survey window stretches from January 21st through March 31st. Teachers, parents, and students are encouraged statewide to participate in this survey in several different categories that cover school climate, whether or not students feel engaged in school, absenteeism, all these different types of things. Over the course of the state responses, there was about 130,000 statewide responses this past year. The new numbers for this year are not out. About 1,000 students, grades three to five, participated. About 2,000 students, grades six through 12 here in our district. 300 teachers, which was about a 65% response rate, and 570 families. So, you know, of those numbers, there is some interesting information. If you go on the RIDE website, there's a lot of data there to dig into. You can dig into school-specific data. At the beginning of the year, at our administrative retreat, Melanie, I asked Melanie to make copies for each principal, so that they had information and data on their schools, and so that they could review that data, because data can be very helpful, especially if you want to respond to those types of things and create school improvement plans and use that data for those types of things. So they're made aware of it early on. You know, one data point that I was just going to bring up that stood out to me, there are lots of them, and if this is something that you want to explore a little bit deeper in achievement, we can do that, because in that venue, we can, you know, play with the website, and you can guide me to what data you want to see, and we can, you know, dig deeper. But just for the purposes of tonight, you know, one data point, I honed in on absenteeism because it happens to be a big push in the state in terms of kids engaging in school, coming to school. And the data point that stood out to me was in the family responses. Only about half the families that responded believe that two or more days of missing school every single month, two or more days of missing school every single month, that that has a negative impact on, you know, student graduation and their performance. And so, you know, one in two families, you know, things like that, that helps us understand. It's not a judgment, just it's an important data point to understand what families are feeling, and that can help us, if we're having absenteeism issues, how to target potentially, how to improve that data and that information. So that's a quick recap. Does anybody, I mean, I don't, it'll be hard to give you specific data points. I have some general data here, but if you have a general question, I can do my best to answer it for you.
Mr. Demana, could you read some of the categories off for the teachers?
Sure.
Sure. Okay, so, teachers are asked a question about absenteeism, building leadership, cultural awareness, both in adult focus and then a separate question for a student focus. Educating all students, frequency of professional activities, high-quality instructional materials, and professional learning. Those are some. School climate is another big one. State initiatives and, and teaching efficacy. Those are some of the categories.
And one more question. Is there a cost to the district for this survey?
No, Dr. Thornton, there is no cost. It's free to participate.
Ms. Feather?
My question is, is, is this anonymous? Are these, these results are anonymized, correct?
Yes, they are. Yes, they are.
Just want to make sure that that's on the record. And also, the other piece of it is, is there any way to encourage, I mean, I know that I've seen the emails. I've seen the emails that come to the parents and everything about encouraging people to, to participate in this, but is there any way to encourage the teachers to participate in this more?
So, principals do, I think, and I see some of the recurring emails, you know, principals do a really good job of putting out the reminders quite frequently within that, you know, time period. Is Pam still here? Roughly, how many times do you send out the email reminders to staff? That's awesome. Okay. So, if you didn't hear, did everybody hear her response? Okay.
Any other questions? Mr. Bacon?
So, how many teachers, again, did you say?
About a 65% response rate. 300 out of about, what, 460, you said, Doc? 464, something like that?
And this is just teachers? Teachers and students perform this, not administration?
I don't have any administrative, I've never taken, I, did I take one? I think we used to do it, administrators, back at some, at some point. Did they stop that? Do they still do it? Yeah. That data, I didn't see that on Dr. Thornton's portal. I didn't see any administrative responses, but I can dig deeper for it.
So, that's, that's exactly what I was trying to achieve, was to get every, essentially, everybody with a Cumberland Schools email to, to perform a survey, just seeing how we are performing here. You know, it's great that we have this to see students and teachers, but I, I think we should do the next step and, and get everybody's opinion. You know, that, that's kind of what my intent was.
I guess, who's everybody? If we have teachers, parents, and kids, who's left?
There's support staff included?
Yes, support staff did, support staff is included in the, in the survey, yes.
It was 300 and how many, that you said?
Out of 400 and however many teachers there are, 464.
So, I have an email of staff numbers that total 645.
I think there's a separate support staff.
Separate support staff.
Staff one. Yeah, there's a support professional survey.
Saying, no, okay.
Which, I don't have the number.
So, all 645 of these staffs, staff numbers, they, they do this survey?
Yeah, we, we only had 78 responses, according to my data in front of me. Support professional survey, 78 responses, but I don't have an exact figure of the exact number of support personnel we have in the district.
Could we get that information or no?
Sure. Yeah, the HR department could provide that for sure.
Mr. Dean?
So, the categories, the teacher categories, you went through, kind of skirt on some of the issues that I am concerned about, but don't really address what I was concerned about. Is there an opportunity to add questions to that survey, or is this something that's done independent of the school system? Like, you know, is it, is it constructed and administered independent of, of us?
Yes, it is. And so, there is, there are, I think, resources online. So, if, if there was a question that you had specific to wanting to influence some of the questioning or whatever, I'm sure you could email the individuals who handle Survey Works for the state and go that route to, to, you know, try to do that.
Okay. I filled these out, probably half a dozen of them, you know. Do you send out the results of the, of the survey, or do they get sent out to parents? Because I don't recall ever, ever seeing results.
They're publicly posted on RIDE's website.
Okay.
The only, the only data that I put out is specific to the school. So, I, I just make sure our principals are aware of their own data relative to their own schools. You know, we look at, well, you know, we look at pretty much all of it. But I look at and peruse our data in comparison to the state, basically.
Is it possible to extrapolate this, the teacher, you know, portion of the test out and, and get, get, get the results based on, based on just the teachers, or is it?
Yes. Yeah, I have, I have, there, there should be, in the drive, there should be that data.
So, just, I've looked at this stuff just to re-responsive. Google RIDE Survey Works. Just Google it. You could spend three days. You can look at each individual school, teachers at each individual school, support staff, students at those schools. And I don't just mean Cumberland. I mean Lincoln, I mean Burlville, I mean Barrington. You can see how Cumberland compares to each of those in terms of climate, in terms of who's happy and who's not. And there's one data here point, there's one data point that I looked at, because I knew this was on the agenda, and I knew that Survey Works existed. And it was something like 65% of the teachers who were responding would be like, would recommend this job either highly or in the second category. You know how these surveys are? It's like strongly agree, agree, you know, really agree, strongly agree, medium agree, medium disagree, don't agree. You know, the way they, they do these, these surveys always are. Whatever, whatever the dynamic is, there's usually five responses. So, I saw that just by way of example. And I just found that. I, I wasn't even really looking for it. You could spend days looking through this data. There's a lot of it. The thing that I saw on the drive is like a PDF printout of one way to look at it. You can go into the demographics of the, of the people who are responding, you know, what their race or ethnicity is, how old they are, how experienced they are, all that sort of stuff, for whatever it's worth.
I think, I think that might be part of the reason, you know, I mean, if you have so many questions, and, you know, I, I just want five or six questions. I don't want to spend days. I just want five or six questions that I have that I think are important.
Ms. Goldstein's?
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Ms. Goldstein?
Thank you. I also know, having sat on school improvement teams, that this information, there's a deep dive into this information in school improvement team, which also includes parents at the school. And I, I guess I would also say that there's a science to the surveys and how the questions are framed and asked so that they don't lead to a certain answer, right or wrong, hypothesis. So, I would say we could give feedback to, potentially, I don't know if we could do that to Survey Works or if we decided to go with another program. But I would be concerned with a survey program that just allowed us, allowed me to ask a question verbatim and not sort of put that through the rigors of what a survey should look like.
There are psychometrics involved when they do this. You're right. There are specific, they ask the questions a specific way, like you mentioned, to not lead, to not create bias, all of those types of things. And a lot of times, they'll ask the same question in different ways to look for consistencies in their responses.
That actually leads to my question. So, the survey is created through a consultant or through RIDE itself, or are you not sure?
I have no idea.
Okay.
Yeah, I really don't.
Survey Works is the company?
Okay. Anorama Education that does the publishing of all the information. And I think, I just want to make a quick note that when, I, I think that when they're talking about you can spend days going through it, it's just because, like, I've geeked out on this. I love going through this thing, and you can download everything to Excel. You can, you can go through all the information to try to, you know, try to, try to support any type of, type of educational programs that you're trying to support. It's really, really cool. And I just really encourage you all to look at it.
Thank you. Mr. Bacon?
So, do we get this in an annual report? Do we get this?
Annually, they, they do release it, yes.
Okay.
Anyone else? Any other questions? The pleasure of the committee?
Oh, give me one second.
Okay, since there is no?
Oh, I make a motion that we vote to move forward with the climate survey.
Okay. Mr. Dean makes a motion to, motion to go forward the climate survey, sorry.
Trying to look, trying to look it up.
Can't speak, it's fine.
I got off the screen. Culture and Climate.
Second, Mr. Bacon, discussion. Ms. Feather, and then Ms. Smith?
My question is, why would we spend money on this when it's already being done?
Okay.
Mr. Demana just said you don't spend money on it. Maybe we can find, maybe we can find a, a, a same contractor that can, that can do the, what we're looking for for no money.
What I'm saying is, RIDE pays for this right now. We have all the data, we have all the information, and it's clear that not everybody on the committee has looked at this information. So, why would we vote to pay additional money to go out and find, go to RFP, find a company that's going to do a survey for us in a scientific way when we already get that data?
As I understand it, this vote is not to spend money. This vote is to move forward with the Culture and Climate Survey.
But in order to actually put on a Culture and Climate Survey, you would, as, as evidenced by the report that Mr. Bacon had prepared, you would need to spend money. Is it true that you would need to spend money with that company that you reached out to, or is that a free company?
With this company, but as said, it was, we don't need to go with this company. Again, the concept here is to go.
You would have the opportunity to vote no then.
Well, we, we have an opportunity to vote yes or no now. I just want to make sure that we're understanding that this is something that would be an additional expense, that would be additional time when that data already gets collected by RIDE.
Thank you, Ms. Feather. Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have, like Mrs. Feather, I've done a deep dive on this. Rhode Island Association of School Committees did do a whole presentation and, and pretty much a class on it last year. So, I was able to attend that and, and go through it. And as you said, there, there was a lot of information in that. I think it's prudent on every one of us to take that time. We, we shouldn't be going up to rebuild something without knowing first every aspect of what is available to us, because we could have that all there already. So, I, I'm not sure what the reason would be to go somewhere else before we actually took the time to go through and do the research on what is being done already, and to do that dive and then find those areas and aspects that we think that, that could be missing, and then look at whether we want to take that forward. So, it, it may be more prudent to table this, to give everybody the time to go spend the three days or whatever it may be to deep dive.
Any other discussion?
Yes, please. We, we could always vote it down when it happens. It's, it's one agenda item on a, on an agenda. If it comes back up, there's, there's no money allocated with this. If I go into that and I, and I find that the, the questions I want to ask are all in there, I would obviously vote that we don't need this.
Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Nay. I'm going to go by each person. Ms. Shea? Mr. Dean? Ms. Feather?
Nay.
Ms., Ms. Smith?
Nay.
Ms. Goldstein?
Nay.
Mr. Bacon? And the chair votes nay. That fails two to five. Next, discussion and our vote to approve 2025, 2026 start and end times. Dr. Thornton?
Madam Chair, this was on for a vote tonight, but I would ask to have you consider tabling it. I have a few thoughts first. I know there's been some discussion and some folks asking, again, to have the later elementary schools go earlier, right? As you know, we have a couple tiers in the elementaries, and the later tier starts second bell, 9:15. And we did go back and look at it again, and I can tell you, historically, these later schools have always been later, but, you know, possibly less later. You know, first bell, 8:45, second, or maybe even 8:50, then 9:05, that type of thing. The challenge we always run into is when you do move one thing, there's always another thing that kind of tips the scale. So, back in 2012 and 13, that area, when we're looking at this, we had more complaints than ever for buses that were late getting to the tiers. That's why we kind of put this window in. Having said that, we're always trying to look at it different ways. One way you could do this and give people relief for the second tier being too late would be to move the middle schools earlier. So, I want to explore that, bring it back to you. So, conceptually, we'd have to see, you know, is that, you know, solving one problem creating another? Maybe not. I mean, hypothetically, you can move the middles 15, 20 minutes earlier and then give relief for that second tier at the Ls. They start now 7:55, so it'd be more like a 7:40, 7:35 type of thing. So, I'm not sure how that would be received, but that's an option. High school is not affected. They start so early. They're on their own. The middles would be the tipping point. Also, I know some folks had said, why can't you run all five Ls at once? That would add many buses to the equation. Just can't do. Also, I know last month, someone asked me, why can't Garvin go late and Community go early? We modeled that. That was a two to four bus add for minis, mini buses. So, I can bring that to you in two weeks and model potentially moving some middle times, if you want to consider that.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Thornton before we table it? Ms. Smith, then Ms. Feather?
Thank you. Dr. Thornton, when you bring the information back to us, I think it's very important that we look at the few years before the construction and take COVID off the table, because we, we made all these changes. We were running those a little bit of an earlier time, and we did have the split with the schools. So, the elementary schools, several started at one time, the others started at a different time. I know that when you were talking about 2012, 2013, that was also the year of 430 students being redistricting and a full day of kindergarten. And I know that that was always a major thorn in every one side, because kindergarten was slowing things down, because it takes longer to get them off the bus, and things like that. So, I would really like to look at the, the data on the start times, how many buses we had, how many students we had in the 2018, 2019 years, so that we can get an understanding and a better look to see if there's a way of shuffling some things around. I, I know that we discussed it earlier, too. We're using our buses that we are busing to two of the other schools that we're required to bus to, Mercy Mount and Mount St. Charles. And maybe we need to look at refining that with them and adjusting their times and getting them into one bus only instead of the two-use bus. See, like, if we can find ways to look at other alternatives other than just taking the middle school and, and looking at them as being the next step of it. I, I'd like to look at three or four different options.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Ms. Feather?
First of all, I'd like to say that if you ever want someone to figure out bus routes, Ms. Smith is the person to do it, because she is a genius with this. She's very perceptive, and she takes her time and, and goes through it all. I also do want to mention that, that I know that last year, I got a couple of emails from constituents on this. I know that last year, we did say something around Community, going back to the previous times after they were done being up here. And so, I think the expectation from a lot of the parents there is probably that we are going to be moving back to that earlier, 15 minutes earlier time, I believe it is. And then finally, the, the one thing that kind of stuck with me with our, our most recent Rhode Island, is, you know, this darn professional development with our Rhode Island School Committees, is there was someone that said something to the effect of, if your bus company is, is the one that's drawing up all your routes, then perhaps you should be looking at, and I'm paraphrasing, perhaps you should be looking at, you know, doing it differently. I wonder, yeah, yeah. And I just, I wonder whether or not there's any way for us to be a little bit more collaborative on the, not collaborative, because you guys are collaborative. I just want to make sure that we are just getting the most out of the, out of the busing we can. I know you guys are. I just need to say it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Feather. Dr. Thornton?
No.
Oh, and then Ms. Goldstein. Okay.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead. On your last point, totally understood, Ms. Feather. But I would just tell you, we have Tracy Walton, Mike Chandler, myself. We don't trust the routes on, on faith. We actually look at the routes with them, but always happy to look at it again. Happy to do that.
Thank you. Ms. Goldstein?
Thank you. I'm, I'm glad to consider tabling it to get more data. I, I, being somebody who had a student at Community and would do pickup and has had the earlier time, the really early time, and the really late time, you know, I, I do, I do have concerns about the
about the late time, and if there's anything that we can do about that. I do think that there's learning loss associated with that late time. I think kids are getting off the bus late. They're getting off the bus after four. In the winter, it's dark. I think that it is hard, I know attendance is so important, and we're working so hard to make sure our kids, our students are in school, but it's almost impossible to get them to an appointment if they're getting off the bus at four, which means that parents are picking up their kids before school is over. It disrupts not only that child, but the entire class. I know that even things like field trips are impacted with the late time, because the buses have to be, it's something that we talked about at the PTO level, because we planned and funded the field trips, that they were really limited in what they could do to add to the curriculum, because they have to be back at a certain time in the day because of the buses. And so if you have that late start, they really can't go anywhere, and we fielded a lot of parent complaints around, we're going to Roger Williams Zoo for the third time, for the third year in a row. So there's things that could be added to the curriculum with, even with different, with different bus schedules, earlier bus schedules. Even 15 minutes makes a difference. So thank you.
Great, thanks. Mr. Dean?
So just to reference the training that we had, again, I know I referenced it earlier, we voted against it, but the, one of the biggest things that Mario, was it Carino? What he says is that the biggest, the biggest thing that came out of the survey they sent to the BVP charter school kids was that they were starting too late, and that was the biggest reason they were sending their kids to charter schools. So if we're serious about getting some of the charter school kids back, we have to really look at the pushing the start times up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Anyone else? Okay, we will table this agenda item, discussion and our vote to approve 2025-2026 start and end times to our next meeting. Thank you very much. Next, discussion and our vote to approve resolutions. Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We do have, I've got to count them out here, we do have 10 resolutions on the agenda this evening, SC-PR-05-2025-39 through 48. These did get discussed in our fiscal subcommittee meeting, and they did all pass three to zero. I do want to point out for the committee that included in this is number 47, which is number nine on the list of the 10, our food services contract renewal. We, while we have an agreement with Chartwell, and we signed that last year, every year we have an option, it's like an option added every year, so we could have for five years with them or a three-year with them, but every year we have to re-sign that contract. So this is similar in pretty much the same type of contract. Chartwell did approach us tonight in the meeting. They did go through all the financial data, what got to their guarantees, what their increase in costs are expected to be. The guarantee is a little bit lower next year, but again, that's just the guarantee, and they're already far exceeding this year's guarantee. So I'm going to acquiesce to the, don't put so much effort on that, Carrie, from, I think Mr. McGrath was telling me just to stop it during finance, and I don't blame him, and I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware that that is part of the resolution, and it did, again, pass three to zero tonight, and I would move passage of all 10 resolutions.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Ms. Smith makes a motion to vote to approve the resolutions, SC-PR-05-2025-39 to SC-PR-05-2025-48. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dean. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. Discussion and our vote to approve payment of bills. Ms. Smith?
Yes, we had payment of the bills in the amount of $209,011.39. I'm doing that by memory. I think that was good. So I, that passed in fiscal subcommittee as well, three to zero, and I would move passage of that as well.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Ms. Smith motions to approve payment of bills of $209,011.39. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dean. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. Dr. Thornton, do we need to go into executive session?
We do not.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Bacon. Second by Ms. Feather. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? We adjourn tonight at 8:16 PM. Thank you very much.